I'd like to call to order the July 24, 2023, special meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, a moment of silence.
Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those anticipated by the committee. The purpose of today's meeting is to receive a presentation by Tracy Nowick, Field Director with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Matters related to the presentation topic but not explicitly listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. There will be time allotted for questions and public comment at the commencement of the presentation, and Ms. Nowick will also, or may also, receive questions regarding the content during the presentation. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the WB-CAM website, www.wbcam.org. The committee welcomes Ms. Tracy Nowick today. Ms. Nowick has been a Field Director for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees since 2016. Amongst other duties, her role includes consulting on superintendent searches for various Massachusetts school districts and acting as a new member advisor to school committees in the Commonwealth. Ms. Nowick also presents workshops on topics including transparency in school budget presentation, school finance, school budget, Chapter 70 implications and developments, social media, and superintendent evaluations. In addition to her work with MASCE, Ms. Nowick is a Certified School Business Administrator from Massachusetts. She is a member of the Worcester Mayor's Commission on Latino Educational Advancement, and she serves on the Worcester School Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad to be with you all. So, is it possible to have, so the school committee I know, and I know that we've got some sort of combination of town officials, is it possible just to get a sense of who's in the room before I start?
Is your mic on?
I think it is.
Yeah, if there's a green light, I think it's...
If there's a green light, it's on, right?
More for the recording than for...
I can talk louder to make sure that you can hear me, though. I do want to make sure that you can hear me.
Okay. My name is Mo McCarthy. I'm on the Finance Committee.
Excellent.
Hi, Jeff Ryan, Board of Selectmen.
Great.
Jan Fox on the Finance Committee. Mary Anderson, I don't have a committee yet, but I hope too soon.
I'm glad you're here.
Jim Holden, Finance Committee.
Cheryl Adams, Finance Committee. Cynthia O'Grady, Finance Committee.
Wonderful. I'm glad you're here, and I want to give you all a lot of credit. MASCE does a lot of training work with school committees in the summertime. It's sort of, you know, school gets out, everybody does graduation, closes the buildings, takes a deep breath, and school committees often then say, "Oh, well, we should do some professional development." But when they also can bring members of the Select Board, members of the FinCom to the table at the same time to have a conversation about school finance, school committees in Massachusetts are required to be trained in how the state's school funding formula works. And so, you know, within the first year of their service, they've been through eight hours of training, including that. But I know that it can be kind of a mystery for everybody kind of on other parts of the table. You kind of pull up the cherry sheet, and there's a number there, but how it got there or what it is based on, let alone what the required local contribution is based on, can be sort of a... And so, that's what I'm going to be walking us through tonight, as well as also then looking at your own numbers. Did some additional work on that to make sure that you get a perspective on not just sort of where you're at, but also kind of what has happened over the last couple of years, because you are among the districts that has actually seen the revolutionary change happening in school funding in Massachusetts as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. So, we're first going to go a little bit into history, which is that, oops, that didn't work. The school funding formula in Massachusetts is actually derived from the state constitution. And so, little bit of history, for those of you who don't know, probably many of you do. Massachusetts has the oldest written constitution that's still in operation in the world, written by John Adams. But it also had the first constitution in the United States that actually had a section on public education in it. And then lots of people borrowed our language, which is fine, because it's good language. In terms of school finance, the part that's relevant is this section in the center, which talks about whose job it is to ensure that there's public education in Massachusetts. As many of you know, we have a very long history in Massachusetts of public education. We boast the first public education, public school in Boston, Latin School in Boston, which basically started about 10 years after the pilgrims got off the boat in Plymouth. But we also, very early on, made it part of the responsibility of towns to provide public schools for their children. And then it actually became part of the state constitution in 1780, when it was adopted, where here, it actually somewhat shifts in terms of whose responsibility it is to make sure it happens, where here it says it's the duty of legislators and magistrates. Legislators is the state legislature, magistrates is the executive branch. So, while we think of public education as a local responsibility in Massachusetts, and it is, making sure it happens is actually a state responsibility in Massachusetts, right from the inception of the constitution. Now, that sounds great, and it's lovely language, but it didn't really necessarily have the force of operation until, over the course of the late 1980s and into the early 90s, there were a series of lawsuits that were filed against the state. Any of you who were in any way involved in either education or town governance or anything else probably remember Proposition Two and a Half Years, those very early ones, where you actually saw, I actually saw a chart this morning that looked like this, although it would go the other way for you, but it was not a good slope. And as a result of that, there were lots and lots of towns across the state of Massachusetts that were finding that they simply didn't have the local resources to be able to fund public education. Now, the sort of backstory that also was happening at the same time was that Massachusetts was a national leader in terms of what we did in terms of special education. So, the special education law nationally was passed in 1973. Massachusetts had actually passed Chapter 766, some of you will recognize the number, the year before. And while that was great, because effectively we were recognizing that we did have a responsibility for all kids regardless of their needs, it obviously is also not cheap. And so, having those two things happening at the same time effectively was a perfect storm. And so, there were a series of lawsuits that were filed across the state. They came together in a lawsuit known as McDuffie, which is named after, as some of you may also know, a school committee member in just up the road, Brockton, who was suing on behalf of his daughter, who now is a school teacher in the city of Brockton. And the SJC found in favor of the plaintiffs, saying that the state was actually not fulfilling its constitutional obligation to the schoolchildren of Massachusetts, that it was not actually up to individual cities and towns to actually fund public education, that this was ultimately the responsibility of the state. I really like the way that they put it here in the second sentence. What emerges from this review is that the words are not merely aspirational or horatory, but obligatory. In other words, yeah, John Adams writes a nice sentence, but he's also telling you, you gotta do something, and you haven't been doing it. And so, as a result of the McDuffie lawsuit, what the legislature was charged with doing was coming up with a way to actually provide public education to every child in the state of Massachusetts regardless of where they were going to school and regardless of their local community's ability to support it. Okay? So, when we talk about 1993 education reform, you very often will hear people talk about the MCAS, they'll talk about state standards, they'll talk about how we changed the responsibilities of superintendents and school committees, they'll talk about how we changed how we certified teachers. And those are all true, but it was in response to a funding lawsuit that the state lost and the local communities won. And that, to me, is really the untold story of education reform in Massachusetts, which is that at ground, it's about school finance. And we were one of the first states in the country to actually massively overhaul our state funding system. Now, for those of you who have been paying attention at the state level, we were well overdue, because that was actually part of the education reform law, was that that was actually supposed to be checked every five years. It took us 25. So, Student Opportunity Act, great, glad it happened, but it took way too long. And so, we ended up with some very outdated parts of the formula as a result of that. Now, the section of the law that actually has to do with school finance that was passed in 1993 is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 70, thus, Chapter 70 being state aid for education, for those of you who ever wondered where that shorthand came from. And the very first part of it actually lays out what's supposed to happen. It's the intention of the General Court, which is the legislature, everybody's favorite local phrase, "subject to appropriation," oh, yeah, there we go, "to do two things, to ensure fair and adequate minimum per student funding, but also a standard local funding effort applicable to every city and town." So, in other words, they're going to figure out how much it costs, and then they're going to figure out who pays for it, how much of it's coming locally and how much of it's coming from the state. That second half sometimes gets forgotten, but that's the part that I think probably pertains to a bunch of you in the room that aren't on the school committee side. So, I'm going to walk you through the first half, because the first half then is sort of becomes the basis of the conversation for the second half. Do realize, though, that all of this, we're in a three-year, for FY24, will be in the third year of changes that are taking place over six years. So, we're halfway through implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act doesn't touch the second half of the formula, it doesn't touch the calculation over what the division is of who pays, but it does have some pretty substantial impacts on the first half of the formula, which then end up impacting the second half of the formula, which is also why I'm going to take you through it first. So, we're going to look at the first half first, which is how much does it cost to educate a child in Massachusetts? Remember that the standard from McDuffie and from Chapter 70 is a fair and adequate minimum. Okay? So, this isn't like your wildest dreams in terms of public education. This is something that's supposed to be fair, that's supposed to be adequate, but it is recognized as being a minimum. And also that we're halfway through changing it, which effectively, from my perspective, is the state has said, "It's not actually adequate, but we're getting there." So, what the state did effectively was it said, "Okay, so in order to educate a child in Massachusetts, what do you need?" Okay? And I know that if we took you all and had you sit down and put out paper and pencil and make a list of what you needed to run a school, you would probably come up with most of the things that are behind me. The one thing I would note that it doesn't include is it doesn't include transportation. The reason for that, I was actually out in the Pioneer Valley on Saturday, is because we have Franklin County Tech, which has 500 square miles that they cover with their buses every day. And then up close to Boston, we have the city of Chelsea, which is three square miles. The state didn't try to touch how you adequately come up with a fair formula for that, so transportation isn't included. What the state does is it assigns a dollar amount to each of the categories that are behind me, based on the grade level of the student. So, there's a level for pre-K, for kindergarten, elementary, middle, high school, and also vocational school. I should note, by the way, that I'm happy to share my slides with you, so by all means take notes, but know that I'll be glad to give them to you. That comes together in what the state calls a base foundation amount. Okay? So, this is how much does it cost at a basic level to educate a kindergartner, elementary, and so forth. For FY24, these are the numbers the state has used. Now, this has only been impacted historically by an inflation rate that the state calculates every year. That's been the only thing that has been historically changing with it, over, in particular, those 25 years we talked about from 1993. Couple of things that are internal to it that are changing now as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. One is, if you think back to the list that was part of the base foundation amount, health insurance was recognized as being kind of its own inflationary category. Not surprising for any of you who've seen what health insurance increases year over year look like. They're not anything like the inflation for anything else. So, they have their own inflation rate. Special education is going up at a particular increasing rate as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, third year of the six-year phase-in. And then there also is a small increase happening to the guidance and psychological services. That was actually a late addition to the Foundation Budget Review Commission, but has been certainly, I think, a welcome one from most perspectives. There's a couple of other things that happened in the next couple of slides that also are changing as a result of SOA. So, that's what we start with. Now, to that base foundation amount, we're going to add two increments, and in each case, this is based on the number of students that you actually have sitting in your classrooms in your school district on October 1. The district sends in their numbers, their counts, it's their official count. So, we're basing FY24 on last year's October 1 count. If that sounds like there's going to be a lag on things, you are absolutely correct. Depending on what happens from one year to the next, it can be a pretty big problem. So, the two things that are added to that are the English language increment. This is done also by grade level, K through 5, middle school, high school, and the low-income increment. So, for FY24, the English language learners increment is as you see behind me. Now, something that you see here that's happening for the first time as a result of the six-year phase-in is high school is the highest amount. That didn't, used to be the case, it used to be the lowest amount. The recognition here is that if you have a student who's an English learner who's in high school, you don't have a lot of time left with that kid. And so, it's going to, it's going to cost you additional amounts to try to make sure that you get that student up to speed and get that student up to leaving English learner status by the end of high school. These numbers are also phasing in additional increases over this, over the previous three years and the three years to come. So, these are going up as well. And then the low-income increments. So, this one was substantially changed, and if you asked me to point to what's the biggest change as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, it's these numbers. Okay? I remember hearing one of the state senators who was talking about this say that it's something like, you know, one-fourth of the change, but it was, I can't remember what the number was that he used in terms of how much proportionally speaking it was of the dollar amount. But most of the money that's changing is here. There was a huge, huge recognition from the state that if you have students who are in poverty, and in particular, if you have a high proportion of students who are in poverty, who are within your school district, it takes your school district substantially more resources to actually do the same sorts of things with those students. So, what this is, is it's now divided into 12 groups. I've noted at the bottom what those groups are. It's based on the percentage of students who are recognized as being low-income in your school district. It is intentionally very, very progressive towards the end. Now, we're one-third of the way through, this is the dollar amounts for FY24. At the end of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, in three more years, Group 12 is going to be equivalent to the full middle school amount of the base foundation rate. In other words, another 100% of funding is going to be associated with a student who's in, who is low-income, who is in the highest poverty districts. Okay? That's the direction we're heading in, we're not there yet. So, that's what's going on with that one. There are two additional pieces to the student, to the foundation budget, out-of-district special education and in-district special education. These two are the exceptions. They are not based in any way on the number of students that you have in your classrooms, except for the general count. It's a 1% of your student enrollment is assumed to be served out-of-district in special education, and at this point, 3.9%, this is moving to four, as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, is assumed to be receiving in-district services. Now, that's if you took, most in-district students are actually only in special education part-time. This was if they, if you took those students and sort of imagined smushing their schedule so it was full-time equivalents. Okay? There is no place in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that actually thinks that's an accurate measure, just so you know, if you're sitting there going, "Oh, my gosh, that's not really it." So, these numbers are somewhat impressively high, it's over $30,000 for out-of-district special education this time, but it in no way reflects your actual cost. Honest, true everywhere, not an exception here. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, the thing that has actually been changing over the entirety of the foundation budget being implemented since 1993 is the inflation rate. Now, I've put here at the bottom, on this side, what the, what the inflation rate actually is. This is not an inflation rate that's the kind that you read on the first page of the newspaper at any point. What it's based on is it's based on the actual spending of towns and of states in the previous year and in the third quarter specifically, for those of you who like to look these things up. Now, that means a couple of interesting things. When there's a lot of spending that's going on in towns and cities and states, like, say, when people got a lot of federal funding as a result of the pandemic, it can drive this number up pretty high. However, as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, the state actually capped the inflation rate at 4.5%. So, for FY24, if we were actually using the real inflation, the quote-unquote "real inflation" rate, it would be 6.1%. It is, however, 4.5%, as it was last year, for similar kinds of reasons. The other thing to know, as I mentioned, is that health insurance, of course, goes up at generally rates that are above even these numbers. It has its own inflation rate now. It's based on a three-year average of the state GIC rate, for those who are interested. And so, for FY24, it's 5.16. Last year, by the way, I had to laugh because I was always making this big deal about it being separate, and it was 4.51. And of course, the regular inflation rate was 4.5, and I was like, "Well, theoretically, it's different." It's not exactly that different this year, but anyway. So, generally speaking, from one year to the next, what your foundation budget is going to change on is based on enrollment changes, right? You have a whole bunch, a bigger kindergarten class than you did the year before, or you have a large number of students who have moved out of English learner status, those kinds of things. And then, of course, the inflation rate. Now, of course, as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, you also have these other changes that I've mentioned that we're halfway through implementing over the course of the next couple of years. Okay? So, what that's going to do is it's going to give you a spreadsheet that looks like this. Now, I intentionally never start here, because people's eyes tend to cross, even if you've got lots of comfort with numbers. As all of you know, the one thing that we do in public is public service in these kinds of ways is we deal with numbers that have a lot of digits. Okay? So, you know, but this is where they're coming from. So, you'll see that over here on the side, that's the list of the base foundation numbers. Might be a little bit foggy, but those were the little boxes that you saw with professional development and administration and health insurance and so forth. Across the top in this first section, we have the enrollment by grade level, so your kindergarten, your elementary, middle, high school, vocational, then the assumed special education, and then followed by the increments for English learner and for low-income. And then, that's going to give you a dollar amount down here at the bottom, which, again, fair and adequate minimum. Now, because no one can read that, and also because it gives you maybe a granular level of those dollar amounts that you don't necessarily need, although it's handy to have, what I've done here is just give you only the numbers, okay, that count for West Bridgewater. So, for FY24, you can see in every case here, what's the FY24 base foundation amount, then the enrollment, gives you a total for preschool, kindergarten, elementary, and so forth. The ones that are in italics, from there down, all of those, please keep in mind that those students, if they are actually students, for special education, they're an assumption, are actually already counted in the enrollment above. In other words, you can have, you have kindergarteners who are not only in kindergarten, but they also are English learners, and they also are low-income. Okay? So, don't try to make that total be all of those numbers, it won't work. But that still gives you, this gives you this $15.2 million. Now, I'm going to pause, because I just talked a whole lot. Any questions so far?
I think I have a question about how you're measuring the per-pupil cost. So, it sounds like if it's a standard, I mean, I'm not sure I'm using the right terminology, but a standard student...
Yes.
And then if they're also in special education...
Yep.
You're adding another piece to it so that their full per-pupil cost is actually higher?
So, special education is the one exception, because special education doesn't actually count, because special education isn't actually a real kid, so to speak. Okay? If you used instead the fact that they were an English learner, then yes, what you said would be the case. There, we all, we all sort of, I think, know that if you have a kindergartner who is also an English learner, then you're talking about you need additional staff, you may need additional curriculum and so forth, right? There are similar kinds of assumptions with students who are low-income, that whether you're talking about enrichment, there's also an assumption that they would need smaller class sizes, those kinds of things, that's what goes into that. Special education, we recognize as being very much more expensive, but it isn't associated with an individual student in quite the same way.
Got you.
Yep, perfectly reasonable question. Anything else? Okay. And as I said, stop me at any point. I taught high school before I did this, and I also have three, well, they're not teenagers anymore, but very accustomed to being interrupted and then finding my way back again, so please, please don't hesitate at all.
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Yeah.
What is the definition of low-income for the purposes of this?
Oh, I love this, this is a good question. I actually didn't include this slide, sometimes I do. So, first, the first thing you should know, particularly those of you who are on the FinCom, is that it has changed. It has changed, I think, three times since FY17. So, at this point, what it is, is it is students who are enrolled in state services, and there are four state services that there are, and because I'm trying to do this off the top of my head, I'm going to not get them all, but Mass Health is one, SNAP is another. Effectively, what it is, is what the state does is it takes those enrollment numbers from the state database, and it matches them with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And if the student turns up in both places, that student is designated as low-income. It does include all of your homeless students and all of your students who are in foster care. And the other thing that now has changed, this sort of last iteration of changes, which also is a result of the Student Opportunity Act, is that districts now effectively can say to the state, "Hey, you missed one." And there's a process they can go through to have a student recognize this low-income who didn't turn up in any of the state databases. So, we have seen a substantial amount of increase in the number of students who are counted as low-income. Now, that absolutely is partly as a result of the pandemic. We know that we have more children living in poverty everywhere as a result of that. However, the other thing that has happened is that the state matching has gotten better, so we're actually finding more of the kids. Just for your information, there's about a million students in Massachusetts, 980, something like that, and at this point, about 450,000 of them are considered low-income. So, we're not quite at 50% of the student population in Massachusetts, but we're getting close.
And that would apply to school choice students?
And that would, I'm sorry?
Apply to school choice students.
It would apply to school choice students. Now, school choice students, I'm glad you raised that, school choice students actually count in the terms of the foundation budget, they are in their home district. And then, when they choice into your school district, there's $5,000 of their Chapter 70 that comes with your student. Similarly, if you have students who are choosing out of your district, they're counted in your foundation budget, and then $5,000 of your Chapter 78 goes to wherever they're going. Small exception for students who have special education needs that get wrangled out between the finance offices of the school districts.
So, a low-income student choice student is just moving the five grand?
Is just moving the five grand. Yep. And so, that's why when we have conversations with school committees about school choice, it always can sort of, it sometimes can feel like free money, but it's one of those where we always talk about marginal costs, where, I mean, the analogy I've heard the school finance people use is, right, if you think of the school district as an airplane, and you gotta take off the airplane anyway, if what you have is an extra seat that's not going to cost you anything, it would be empty, okay, that's a good opportunity for school choice. But if you're going to need another plane, probably one where you don't want to actually do that. Great. Okay. So, just as a reminder, for the Student Opportunity Act, this is the third year of a six-year implementation. This is a standard slide, by the way, but in, at the end of this, you're going to see why I'm particularly excited for you all, because it matters that we're in year three of a six-year implementation. This does include, as I said, a separate inflation rate for health insurance, an increase in the in-district special education percentage, we're almost all the way in on that one, increase in the dollar amount per pupil for the English learner increment, and similarly for the low-income students, and for that progressive funding for higher increments of poverty. SOA, by the way, also was the implementation of those 12 groups, it used to be 10, and they used to be evenly divided. Okay? Yes. And I emphasize that, because that's actually where the big money is. So, few things to know about the foundation budget. Districts have to spend at least 95% of this amount every year. If you don't, you get a nasty letter from the state. If you go too far down, the state actually starts taking aid back. It's only happened a couple of times, but it does happen. Most spend more, many spend much more, so that's pretty standard. It does not include all funds spent on special, on education in a district, transportation is the big one, but it also can include things like rental property, adult education, community spending, and also realize that money that is spent out of grants, capital spending, are nowhere included in any of this calculation. As I said, it's a fair and adequate minimum, or that's what it said that it is, and the law was signed until, it was... And the law was signed into, it was signed into law by Governor Baker in November of 2019. It was intended to start being implemented in FY '20, and it was supposed to be a seven-year phase-in. Governor Baker filed his preliminary FY '20 budget in January of that year, and then we, sorry, it was supposed to be '21, excuse me. He filed his preliminary FY '21 budget in January of '20, and then just about the time that the House was supposed to take it up, we shut down everything because of the pandemic. And you might remember, that was the year that we actually didn't get a state budget until the fall. So no, we did not actually do the first year of the Student Opportunity Act. So now we have to pay for it, okay? We're going to come up with this $15.1 million. Now, the first thing that I think is an important thing to know from the state level, and this didn't actually used to be written down anywhere. At one point, I collared the former deputy commissioner and said, where does it say this? And he said, it's not written down anywhere. Now it is. It's in the Student Opportunity Act. The intention is that the foundation budget as, at the state level, like all of the foundation budget for all K-12 education, is supposed to be funded 59% by local funding and 41% by state funding. Now, that's if you take the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The divisions locally vary and vary widely, okay? But that's the underlying calculation before the state sort of does anything else, is it takes the whole, once you've calculated the foundation budget for all of the school districts in Massachusetts, it then effectively splits it 49-51 and says, okay, state's coming up with 41% of this, we now got to figure out the other 59%. So it bases both its sort of statewide calculation and the local calculation on two things. One is the equalized valuation, full and fair cash value of all taxable property in each municipality. I do emphasize taxable property. That means effectively that while you're not getting anything from things that are not taxable, you're also not having it counted against you, so to speak. And then the other thing is income, which is derived annually from the DOR filings from your ZIP code, okay? In both cases, there's usually a bit of a lag. So this is intentionally 20, and that's because we're actually using 20 this year. So in terms of calculating local share, if the state's trying to get to 59% of the FY '24 foundation budget, what it does is it says, okay, so of the entire foundation budget, our target local share is $8.2 billion. Again, whole state, okay? Now, as some of you may know, the most, right, and this is written into the Student Opportunity Act, but it also has been sort of the standard understanding pretty much since 1993. The most that any district is required to contribute of its foundation budget, and that's required, is 82.5% of the foundation budget, okay? So the deal here is supposed to be that everybody has skin in this game. Every school district gets state aid as a result of this calculation. So that's why that's there. So the, what the state does is it then looks at, okay, so where does that get us? How much money would we need if 82.5% is $8.2 billion? We need $11.1 billion, okay? So this is going to run, the state runs the calculation this way, and then it actually is going to run the calculation the other way when it does it for cities and towns. And yes, I do think of math kind of like an English major because that's what I was. We do things frontwards and backwards. So what the state does is for this, again, for the combined effort yield, for the statewide, how much money do we need in order to get to that $8.1 billion? You need $11.1 billion. They're going to do a 50-50 split, where 50% of that calculation, 50% of that calculation of wealth is going to come from property, and 50% of that calculation of wealth is going to come from income, okay? There's an even division. And then, so what the state does is then says, okay, how much property wealth do we have? How much income wealth do we have statewide? And, this is the magic of decimals, what decimal do you need in order to get yourself to these two equal numbers, okay? So what we're then going to walk away from this calculation with is those two decimals because the state's going to use those two decimals for every city and town in Massachusetts to figure out that fair and equal calculation of how much you can afford to contribute to your public schools, okay? I will say this is by far the most complicated thing that I ever, ever have to explain. If you're feeling somewhat vaguely lost, you were hardly the first. But the idea here is that they run, they run one calculation at the state level to come up with something they then can apply to everyone. So they have some way of saying to, you know, Charlemont, Massachusetts, and to Boston, hey, we're running the same calculation for everyone in terms of how much you can afford to put towards your public schools. Now, I think it's kind of neat. It gives me ways to actually have real conversations with school districts that like, this is what we're doing everywhere. There's ongoing debates as to whether or not it's the best way to do it. It's shifted at least once during its history. But that's what they're doing every year is running this calculation. So if you remember, that behind all of this is a 50-50 split at the state level in terms of how much of this calculation is coming from income, how much of this is coming from property taxes, and that that's where we're deriving these two decimals from, that then become something that we see regardless of what city and town you're from. Even if all you've got is that part, you've pulled away kind of the part that's most meaningful. No one's going to test you on the math, I promise. So to use your numbers, okay? We're using the 22 equalized property valuation for FY '24 to run your calculation for this current fiscal year, which comes to $1.4 billion, okay? We then use the uniform property percentage that you just saw derived from the previous slides, and that comes up with a local effort from property wealth of $5.1 million. Then we're going to do the same thing with income, okay? For income, we're using the 20 numbers. My joke is always because people dispute their income taxes, maybe a little bit more than they dispute their property taxes. I don't know. We've got more of a lag on this one. And if you run the same calculation, you end up with $4.7 million being derived for that, giving a total combined effort yield of sort of, how much can you put towards public education of $9.9 million? Now, remember what I said is that no city or town is required to do more than 82.5% of foundation. Now, 82.5% of the foundation of the town is not the same as 82.5% of the foundation of the K-12 public schools because you're also part of a regional VOTAC, okay? So you'll notice that for the, for the foundation budget here, it's $16.6 million, not the $15.1 we had for West Bridgewater, sorry, yes, for public schools. That's because of, it includes that, the contribution to southeastern VOTAC as well. So your maximum local contribution is $13.7 million. Now, that is more than we came up with the combined effort yield. So they're not going to use the $13.7. They're going to take, they take whichever is smaller, and that's your target contribution. So what the state is trying to do is it's trying to come up with a percentage of your foundation budget, okay? So if 82.5% is the highest percentage, where do you fall in terms of where you, what percentage of the foundation budget you can contribute? And thus, you end up with a target of 40.35%, okay? And that's, again, the percentage of the foundation budget based on the combined effort yield that you can contribute. Now, we don't stop there because the other thing that the state does is it looks at two numbers, which is how much were you required to contribute last year, okay? Which was $90 million. And then it uses the municipal revenue growth factor, which is a standard measurement of local increases in the local economy, which for West Bridgewater was a 4.3%. And it just does a simple multiplication and comes up with a preliminary contribution of $9.4 million. Now, they're then going to go back and say, okay, but what was our target? What percentage of the foundation budget were we trying to get you to contribute, right? And it figures out how close you are to that. If you're above, the state every year decides how much it's going to decrease you. It's, again, this year, 100% reduction towards the target. But if you're below the target, depending on how much below the target you are, they're going to bump you up a little bit. So in this particular case, because your preliminary local contribution was $9.4 million, and remember, we had, what was it, 9.9? They're going to try to, they're going to kick you up a little bit. And so that's what's going on with this part down here at the bottom, where there's a, where they're doing the calculation as to how, what your shortfall is from your target to get you to 57.26%, okay? So it's not all the way there, but it's closer, is what they're doing with this calculation. So just to give you an idea, because none of us live in sort of isolated spaces, right? We always live in a context, and we kind of are wondering what the neighbors are up to and that sort of thing. And I think most of us have maybe some of an idea as to kind of what the, what the, what the wealth looks like maybe in surrounding communities, but sort of translated into these terms, we might not. I just pulled some of the percentages. And remember, this is, this is the percentage of the foundation budget. This isn't like how much they're actually spending. This is what the state says they have to contribute towards their foundation budget. So this is not, we're not standardizing anything except whatever their foundation budget is. I just ran what percent these towns are required to contribute. So you're over here, okay? And then it goes, I was originally going to put them in alphabetical order, but that didn't work. Then it goes through Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, and then remember, this is the towns. So Whitman, you won't be surprised that Brockton's there in the middle, Easton, Abington, Rainham, and Hanson. So you're actually, interestingly, you're kind of, you're kind of among peers with the obvious exceptions of Easton and Brockton in terms of sort of how much are towns being required to contribute to their foundation budgets. I honestly ran this not really knowing, offhand. Sometimes I do know offhand, but I thought that was, you know, interesting in terms of that. And then, of course, the state fills in the rest of that as state aid. And sometimes this is actually the part that people do see is, oh, I see a million, you know, how many millions of dollars the next district over is getting in Chapter 78, and how comes it's so much more than us, or how much it's not less than us? And if you remember that it's a percentage of their foundation budget, that may answer part of the question. Anything there? Okay. So this is the slide that I'm actually most excited about because I think that it's good to sort of, to sort of give some perspective over what's been happening for the last three years, right? We've got three years of the foundation budget review, foundation budget being changed. And you are one of the districts that I have been going out and arguing we need to talk more about. Because, of course, the real, the big story, and I know the school committee will remember this, but some of the rest of you may as well, the argument around the Student Opportunity Act came right back here, just like McDuffie to Brockton, right? Like, we talked about Brockton, we talked about New Bedford, we talked about my hometown. We talked about Springfield. Like, we talked about the gateway cities needed the support, okay? And when you see that Brockton, you know, can only contribute 18% of their foundation budget, I don't think anybody's going to argue, right? That's, that's pretty clear. But the thing that doesn't get told as much is that because we have such huge revolutionary changes happening to the first part of the calculation, the foundation budget increases are so substantial over the period of the implementation that it's actually now getting, working its way through other districts. And in particular, what it's doing is districts that have been caught in hold harmless, which may be a term some of you are familiar with, which was that if you, between one fiscal year and another fiscal year, were going to, were going to, according to the original calculation, receive less state aid, which usually was because you had a smaller foundation budget than the previous year, the state would hold you harmless. You'd get the same amount of state aid, and then you would get an increment, usually $30 per pupil, depending on what the legislature voted, over that. Now, the problem with that is that you end up with these very tiny increases, okay? And it never goes away, right? So the hold harmless of one year gets built into the differential for the next year and the differential for the next year. And essentially, what you're doing is getting farther and farther away from being able to see real increases in state aid. Well, guess what West Bridgewater did over the past three years, okay? This is FY '24, so the current fiscal year. This is FY '23, the one year just finished. And this is FY '22. And if you'll notice, there are four labels here down along the bottom, which only apply to FY '22. You were a district that was getting hold harmless and a minimum aid increase in FY '22. The foundation budget has increased enough that you're now getting real increases year over year. So in FY '22, the increase in state aid that you had gotten was just that $33,000. And some of you may remember that, between FY '21 and FY '22. In the difference between FY '22 and FY '23, in state aid, you got $744,000 more, $1,000. And this year, you got $1.2 million more dollars over last year, okay? So those are the year-over-year Chapter 70 increases. And this is why I'm sort of going around and telling people that they need to stop saying that the Student Opportunity Act only benefited the gateways, and we all need to give up and fight for something else. We're only halfway through, okay? And what you're seeing here, you're, you are a group six in terms of student poverty. So you're not sort of all the way at the end in terms of high poverty, but you, you are on the edge of that sort of progressive lift. And the other thing that matters is that you are not a district in which the pickup is going to entirely come from the town side. Because remember, when the foundation budget goes up, there then is that calculation of how much of it's coming from the town versus how much of it's coming from the state. In every single place, including the gateways, by the way, there is going to be an increase in the amount that's coming from local coffers as well. However, how much of it comes from the state versus how much of it comes from the local community depends on that calculation in terms of the municipal contribution. And because you're at the 57% level, there is going to be more of a pickup from the state side than there is from the local community side, as we see the foundation budget go up, okay? So again, this is the slide that I think I'm most excited about, and this is kind of your story. Now, everybody then says, okay, but what happens at the end of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, as in six years? Well, the first answer is we all need to remind the state that they're supposed to be reconsidering this every five years. It's in the law again. We need to make sure they do it this time, not wait 25 years. But I do, I mean, I do realize that this is going to be your story for the next several years in terms of those implementations, okay? Now, I didn't want to leave you without recognizing that this isn't your whole budget story because you are a community that contributes over required spending, okay? Now, we are living in FY '24. We just finished FY '23, the last week of June. There is no data out on FY '23. Those reports are due in October. So I cannot give you last year, I cannot give you this year. What I can do is give you FY '22. So I pulled the numbers on FY '22 just to give you a picture. And also, of course, this is the year where you were hold harmless and got a minimum aid increase. So that, I think, kind of adds to the interesting portion of this story in terms of sort of what the proportionality is. Now, the other thing to remember when you're talking about revenue sources for these couple of years is that everybody's numbers are weird because of, on the school side, ESTER spending, on the town side, ARPA spending. So everybody's numbers in terms of how much of this is coming in from grants because of the federal grants is going to be off-kilter from what it's usually like. So with that word of warning, keep this in mind. This is your local required contribution, okay? For FY '22, it was $8.1 million. To that, and to bring you to foundation, you had $4.3 million. You then had your hold harmless and your minimum aid increase. This is how much you were spending in grants from revolving funds. I am sure that's more than it normally would be. I'm sure that's because of ESTER. I'm saying that everywhere, no matter what district it is, you absolutely have more going into grants than usual. And then the local contribution above required was another $5.4 million. Now, this is only, I should note, this is actually including everything. I actually pulled this from the state report. So this actually does include things like transportation and anything else that usually wouldn't count towards foundation. The state has all of that in the department reports. And those, that is all of the data I have for you. But I'm happy to go through anything else, and I'm happy to take any further questions.
I have a question about this.
Yes.
So where is the school choice money that's kind of transferred over from other districts? Because we do have very high school choice numbers.
It's part of your, it comes in a revolving fund.
Okay.
So it's in the $3.8 million, actually.
Right there.
Yep.
Can I ask a sort of a fundamental question? When you went back to the beginning of your presentation and you said that the state is actually responsible for the foundation, and yet they're only saying they're responsible for 41% of the budget?
Of the funding of it.
That doesn't really jive with me, and I'm wondering if there's any logic around that.
Well, mostly because the legislature has never said we'll pick up 100% of the tab. There, sometimes there are pushes in that direction. I don't think that I've heard any that have actually made it into bills or legislation. I think that part of what the state is, sort of from a, from more of a sort of politics perspective than a money one, is respecting that we do actually have a really strong tradition of local control in Massachusetts. And while we're not depending only on the local the local communities to fund anymore, there's a significant amount of control that's exercised there. And I think the state's saying, if we're going to balance, you know, Massachusetts also has a significant amount of oversight in education. But in terms of where that balance falls, I'm not sure it's forty one, fifty percent, fifty nine percent in terms of control either. But I think that that generally is part of the argument. Yep.
A question about budgeting.
Yes.
How would you go about this from a budgeting point of view when you don't know what the chapter seventy funds are going to be? I mean, you don't want to create a budget that ties to the amount of money you're being given, but at the same time, you want to adequately staff the school. So how do you go about, knowing that there's going to be a big increase of chapter seventy money coming in, how do you go to the town and say, okay, we're increasing this and this budget line because we're expecting this money to come in? And then the money comes into the town and then it gets sent to the school.
Right, so chapter seventy is required to spend on public education in Massachusetts. But really, what the the way that the state measures it is the state says you have to spend your foundation budget. So, you know, chapter seventy goes in, and then what has to happen is you have to allocate both the required local contribution and the chapter seventy amount to the to the schools at least, and in most cases, more. The, honestly, you can, if you know what you're doing. Once you know what your student enrollment is in October, you can actually calculate your foundation budget for the next year. If you have a pretty strong history in terms of what your municipal revenue growth looks like, you can then actually come up with a decent calculation then as to what the split's going to be in terms of the state versus the the local. I do know that they're, in particular, because the gateway communities have been so heavily dependent on chapter seventy eight, their majority chapter seventy eight funded, and so that usually tends to be their story. And also, by the way, they mostly are funded only at foundation, so like, the foundation budget is kind of their whole calculation. Many of them will actually calculate their foundation, their projected foundation budget and back in October and actually come up with that number. You for sure can calculate your foundation budget. The municipal balance calculation, you can, you can usually do a pretty decent job if you have some idea of what your history has been on on the municipal revenue growth factor.
So I guess that's where our struggle is, is figuring out what our foundation budget's going to be when chapter seventy money is coming in.
Yep.
What are you suggesting to schools that put together budgets not knowing this extra chapter seventy money was coming in? And they recognize that they have those needs, but they didn't build it into the budget because they didn't have the money?
And, well, and this is one where I've actually been sort of saying to the, so first of all, the state legislature unanimously passed the Student Opportunity Act, right? Like, everybody voted for it, which like, doesn't happen for anything. So what I've been saying to the legislature is you guys really need to be going out and bragging about the fact that this is happening because you didn't just do this pickup for the gateways. It's actually happening, and because part of the story here is that communities like yours and like, I mean, the one that I caught the headline for was Long Meadow out by Springfield, where the superintendent literally, when the budget came down, said, we're getting two million more dollars, and I wasn't expecting it, okay? That's because he was believing the story that everybody was, which was it was only the gateways that were getting increases. You do need a pretty strong amount of understanding of how the foundation budget goes together and the municipal calculation goes together in order to be able to to figure out what the outcome's going to be for your district. Because we have a lot of communities that have been used to either, you know, your your hold harmless or your major, your majority local funded, and that may be beyond your required funding. And that's been your story for so long that you're like, okay, well, you know, chapter seventy, like, we're glad we have it. We depend on it to some degree, but it's not really our big story. If that's what people are accustomed to, then they're not running these calculations the way the gateways avidly have been. And so, yeah, the thing that I'm really advocating for, and to be fair, the the school finance folks, they they know their story, right? They know their local communities. And if this hasn't been part of what they've needed to calculate and needed to know, then gosh, yeah, this is taking them by surprise. And then, of course, we have a year like this one where the governor doesn't have to file a budget until March, and so nobody's actually even getting projections until then. We had a lot of people scrambling back in February who were, you know, who were learning how to construct their foundation budgets. Again, they didn't need to know before, but now you kind of do. So that's really part of my advocacy across the state as I'm talking school finance to to school districts, but also to towns, is to try to get a handle on what the next couple of numbers, next couple of years are going to look like for you because they may be, they may be different than you have expected and may be different than your history has been. And then, as you say, sort of planning for that. By the way, from the municipal side, planning also for the fact that if the foundation budget goes up, yes, chapter seventy is, but so is the municipal contribution, right? Because that's the other part of the story. Now, if you've been funding over, then you're going to get into, okay, well, your required may not be going up beyond what you, you know, you already contributing, but then what does that do to the balance in terms of the school district? And that's really where these kinds of conversations are useful because at least you're all sort of starting from the same place. If we're starting from misunderstandings is how this comes together, those conversations can be particularly fraught. Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question.
So I think West Bridgewater is in a particularly unique situation because that part of that three, well, this is fiscal year twenty two.
Yes.
Going back in my mind, I think part of that three point eight million in grants was one point five million in school choice. And because our population is growing and we are having, you know, when you take a school choice, you take them to the end. But now we're having to slowly, through attrition, kind of eliminate school choice. But then, in order to maintain the quality of education and to actually, I think, you know, to Mary's point where we didn't quite have the funding before, we were taking more school choice and we could provide the resources, we're now in a pickle.
Right, and the thing that I always say about school choice is that it ends up sort of looking like free money, but it's a very volatile revenue source. And yes, if you're, then yes, if you're seeing enrollment growth and you don't actually have that room to spare anymore, then you're talking about a different, yeah, a different kettle of fish, absolutely. Nope, yeah, putting school choice on the table in terms of like, where does it actually come from? And how much does it actually cost the district versus, you know, in what circumstances is it a good idea and what circumstances isn't it? Definitely a common conversation in Franklin County, where they basically are like competing for the same amount of students, same students. But certainly, like, kind of regardless of which way the calculation works for you, having a good idea as to what does that end up really meaning is a good is a good conversation to have.
Yeah, and I think we'll have to, we're going to go through growing pains because school choice for West Bridgewater twenty years ago
Yep.
was a great idea.
Yeah.
But now.
Right.
So it's.
And remember, the, I mean, at the end of the day, you, it works better for the end calculation if those, if what you have are students that are actually your students that are enrolled because they're quote unquote worth more, as much as that's a terrible way of putting this, but it is. But yes, you have, you have to make adjustments to where the, where the, both where the money flows and also where the enrollment flows. Yeah.
But do you have like a formula that you can send us, like, with our numbers so we can back into it ourselves?
For which, what's going to happen for the next three years?
Foundation budget, yeah.
I can't, I would not be able to run those calculations because I'm not familiar enough with what your history is for things like the municipal revenue growth and that kind of thing. Yeah, those are ones where there's some decent conversations that take place in Masbo. I hope your school finance person is a member of the School Business Officials Association. It's a, it's one place to do it. MMA does some decent, some some stuff like that. But that's, I don't run those calculations, kind of intentionally, because I don't know the local context well enough to.
In the Brockton situation, was that just that they weren't able to make their contribution?
In terms of the McDuffie case?
No, they're, the Brockton.
Why they're each.
Why they're having some massive layoffs.
Oh, yeah, so, I know, I actually read those headlines and I was like, what on earth is going on? Yeah, so my understanding is that what they're doing is that they're, rightsizing is such a terrible conversation. The last couple of years, what, and I'm, some of this is speculation, but what what a number of districts did was, we had enrollment declines during the pandemic, almost everywhere. In some cases, those students regained, in some cases, they didn't. But most districts didn't lay off staff intentionally, in part because, I mean, that was one of the things we were enjoined to do with our ESTER funds was to actually make sure we weren't laying people off in the middle of the pandemic. My understanding is that what Brockton is doing is they're now sort of starting to make those decisions in part because they don't want to sort of have the fiscal cliff, which is FY twenty, so the ESTER funds going away just about the same time that they're starting to reach the end of the of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Because those two things do fall sort of quick in quick succession. That's my understanding. That's like, something like secondhand at this point, maybe thirdhand, but.
How much weight do you put on that infamous per pupil expenditure calculation that that people even talk a lot about?
I loathe the per pupil expenditure calculation. Because, so now you've walked through the foundation budget, and you probably can guess why, right? You're supposed to spend more money on kids who, you already knew you were spending more money on kids who have special education needs, right? You're supposed to, by the cap, by the formula, spend more on students who are English learners. You're supposed to spend more money on kids who are low income. So is Brockton's per pupil supposed to be higher than a community that has fewer poor kids and fewer kids that are learning? Yeah, absolutely. And so, yeah, the the story, the thing that I always say is, if you're doing that, you're forgetting really sort of the constitutional basis for how we spend money on schools in Massachusetts. Like, yeah, you know, in Worcester, my per pupil spending is supposed to be higher than almost all of my surrounding communities. If it's not, the state's not doing its job. Yeah. Also, no one should be comparing anyone to Cambridge. I'm sure you don't do that here, but occasionally we hear Cambridge, don't talk about Cambridge.
Well, also, there's so many varied needs within the children themselves.
Yes.
To to sort of stick everybody as an average doesn't feel right to me.
Yes, and then you get sort of, you know, funny ones, like, you know, Boston. Boston is an outlier in almost every way, but Boston has enormous transportation costs. Well, that's because they bus all the parochial and charter school kids everywhere in the system. And they're under federal agreement in terms of, you know, desegregation orders. Okay, I, I mean, that's going to cost a lot of money, so, yep.
I thought we received some subsidization, is that the right word? I thought transportation was subsidized at least partially?
Nope.
There is an increase in the amount of.
Right, okay, so, so if you have a regional school district, regional transportation is reimbursed. This year, probably a hundred percent. Interesting fact, by the way, there is also a state law saying municipal school transportation is also supposed to be reimbursed. Nobody ever talks about that part. Regional transportation, you'll hear about every year. What there is, is there's reimbursement for, at least in part, transporting students who are homeless because school districts are required to transport them to whatever is considered their home school. There also is reimbursement for sort of out-of-district vocational, which is a little bit of a tricky, it's not a lot of money. And then I think what you're talking about is part of the Student Opportunity Act was that what's known as the circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement for high-cost special education, now includes a proportion of the transportation if you're transporting the students to someplace else. So that would be chapter seventy six, seven six six schools, which are the, the private schools that are specifically for special education needs. Yep, in every case, they're come, they're happening the next year. So what you may have heard was the sort of giant kerfluffle over the fact that there's a fourteen percent increase in the tuition for those private special education schools. Turns out that the state was sort of subsidizing an increase through their ARPA funds, something that at least I didn't even know was happening, many people didn't know was happening. And then they decided to stop, and they were passed, they passed along the tuition increases to the school districts, and we all found out in October. And of course, they can say, we will reimburse those increases, but that means everybody, every district has to front the funds. And it's reimbursed next year, so, yep.
Is there a formula for that?
For the circuit breaker? Yes. So it's, it was originally four times the statewide average foundation budget per pupil. Anything over that got reimbursed at seventy five percent. What they did when the foundation budget started to increase was they set it at a particular rate, and now it goes up by the cost of inflation. So it's about forty five thousand dollars, so anything over that gets reimbursed at seventy five percent.
The, we have a lot of building going on in town?
Yes.
If I understood you correctly, anything that, you know, were to be occupied or open prior to October first would obviously get counted into state. Anything after, if we have thirty or forty units open in December, the town eats that?
Yes, so if you have students who are coming into the school district, they are not going to count towards your enrollment the next year, yes. Yeah, so, and, I mean, it honestly happens regardless of what, the the one exception that I am aware of is, you might remember Hurricane Maria had a number, there were lots of students who actually sort of left the Caribbean islands and came to Holyoke and Worcester and some other places. There were so many students who came all at once that the state actually put a grant together to kind of bump those up. And there, there also was similar, something similar that happened with California wildfires with that. But it generally has to be one of, something that actually impacts like the entire state for the state to do anything.
Yep, students that move in mid-year can't really be accounted for before they get here.
I know there was a number that we can't.
Yeah, we've got so much building going on that that's going to be a big concern.
You can't really guess. I mean, you could, but.
Yeah, but we're not allowed to count those numbers, you know, count the chickens before they hatch.
Right, so you you do have a balance, right? It doesn't count towards your foundation budget, but then you sort of have to do some sort of a calculation in terms of like, where are they going to end up and do you have enough room in the elementary schools or wherever and that kind of question? Yeah, definitely something that's happening in any of the districts that have growing enrollment.
Two-year lag, as this is.
So it's always affect, yes, effectively, yes, for the fiscal year, yep.
So that new, though, all those new houses too impact that calculation where it's the the wealth and the.
It does, yes.
A lot of those houses are selling for, you know, high prices.
Right, so you'll, there'll, there'll be kind of almost even more of a lag on that because as you saw, the the revenue calculation is a couple of years old. But yes, you eventually are going to see that figure into your target local contribution because of the amount that the town is calculated to be able to contribute is going to go up. Yep, absolutely.
I think our foundation budget is going to look different pretty quickly.
Yes, well, in fact, I will tell you, so, you know, I, as you might guess, do a lot of this kind of thing. But this is the first time where I was literally sort of putting it together, and I thought I had screwed up somewhere because I had to go back and look at FY twenty three again because I was like, wait a minute, they were, they, you know, they were, they were doing hold harmless. And then that's like, so, which, again, you're not the only one, but every time it happens, I go, wait a minute. But yeah, no, particularly for, you'll have really both halves of the calculation, if you're having a lot of building, changing over the next couple of years. So you've already, you already kind of know the Student Opportunity Act implement, you know, influence, depending on what the student enrollment looks like, both in terms of dollars, but also in terms of who the students are. Like, you know, how many of them are, you know, do you have people who are English learners who are, I assume, by the way, you're, you know, you're another community. I did actually pull your your English learner calculations over time, but I assume that it's not unusual for you to have families that are moving out of Brockton, right? So that can mean for districts that traditionally haven't had a lot of English learners that suddenly, like, you go from having sort of five kids to having twenty. I mean, I've told suburbs that, you know, it's one thing for me as a Worcester school committee member to talk about English learners. You know, that's most of our kids at one point in their education. We're about sixty six percent first language other than English, thirty three percent English learners. But when you have a district that was like one or two percent English learners and that goes to seven or ten, that's a massive change for a district to be able to to manage.
Yeah, West Bridgewater has seen a large increase in English language learners and high-need students.
Absolutely, yes. And I mean, that also is another one of those where, you know, you want to make sure that you can, you know, do as as much for your school students in-house as you can. So that does mean, in many cases, adding special education services in-house. But that is certainly a cost, and it's also one of those where there's this balance of sort of, okay, but what, you know, it's largely an unrecognized cost by the state. Do remember, by the way, that circuit breaker does kick, you can use it for in-district too if you are calculating, if you're tracking the cost for a student who's in-house.
As you're traveling around giving these presentations, what what's the feedback in general from, what are their biggest concerns?
So the first feedback is on this, which is the number of districts that are sort of like, well, wait a minute, I didn't think this was the thing that like applied to us. Like, you know, I was, I was glad to go fight for, you know, and by the way, like, there was absolutely across the board support in all kinds of communities for the Student Opportunity Act. So the first thing is a lot of shock of, oh, wait, this is us? I didn't think this was us. I thought, I thought we were doing something nice for Brockton. That's the first thing. And then this sort of like, okay, but how do we tell? Like, what's it going to look like in the next couple of years? That's, I think, the second thing. And then there is this, you know, depending on what kinds of decisions were made with ARPA and ESTER funds, you know, then what does that mean as we're not going to have them anymore? Did we plan for those to go away? Did we plan for those to go away? I will say that, in my experience, as much as there continue to be these headlines about fiscal cliffs, most school districts, I mean, they knew the period of the, the grant, they've been making the plans. They're, you know, they prepared for it. So there's that. I think also, in Western Massachusetts, which has pretty solidly across the board declining enrollment, there still is this sort of unanswered question of what do we do for rural schools? And I mean, you have certainly some parts sort of south of here that qualifies as rural schools, some, there's a couple of, of districts on the Cape that qualify as well. But really, once you start going across Franklin County and into Berkshire County, there's just this question of how do you run a school district with, you know, 500 kids? And it's going down every year. And you can only put kids on a bus and ship them so far before it becomes unreasonable. So I think at the state level, that's sort of the unanswered question of sort of, you know, if we're all in this together, according to the Constitution, what, what are we doing about Berkshire County and Franklin County?
I had a question about hold harmless.
Yeah.
The past budget season was the last time I had heard, or was the first time I had heard that term? Is that something that continues? Is the town held harmless going forward?
So, no, so you, so FY, so. You were held, the, um, the town was held harmless in '22. Because the amount of, um, Chapter 78 that you got in '21, foundation, Chapter 78 that you got in '21, was more than you were calculated to get in '22. If I, I could pull up the '21 spreadsheet if you want to see how much it is. So that's what, well, actually, the, the answer is that it would be 147, $613 more. So that is what happens, but what, the, the part of the calculations the state runs, when it, it does the sort of, okay, so how much is your foundation budget? How much can you locally contribute? Then how much does that mean for foundation aid? Is it says, okay, is this amount of foundation aid more than this amount of foundation aid? And the answer is yes, so you didn't need hold harmless.
Now, what if it wasn't, and it was less?
If it was less, then you would have had the same thing happen again.
So that hold harmless.
So the hold harmless would have been, it would have been all of this amount, you would have had, you would have gotten the same amount, and then you would have gotten this, sorry, you would have gotten a, well, it would have been ca, it would have been a $30 increase for FY23. So you would have gotten this amount straight across, plus a $30 per pupil increase.
So there's always, the town's always going to be held harmless regarding the Chapter 78?
Yes. But it means that you're only gonna get a marginal increase if that's the calc, if that's the.
As you're figuring out your budget for the next year, you're only gonna get a very small increase compared to a town which is not in that position.
Yes.
Well, previously, when I would look at budgets, we would have discussions and it would be, well, if they, if they fund Chapter 70 to that amount, had been the conversation.
Yeah, and I don't know why, so in terms of kind of dependable lines, like, so I've been involved in, in school finance at this point, so I've been with the association for seven years, but I've been around school finance and in a gateway city for something like 15. And even when we had the, the severe economic downturn back in '08, part of what the state did with its federal funding was it made sure that it hit Chapter 70 across the board. The one thing that we always say is, probably the first thing they would cut, if they were gonna cut anything, would be the hold harmless and minimum aid increases. But they would always at least hit, but foundation aid has pretty consistently been, you know, one of the sort of core commitments that the state has made. Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yep, yeah, I would say that this is, you know, Chapter 70 doesn't tend to really be up for dispute. They tend to sort of, you know, argue about exactly how much they're gonna fund regional transportation reimbursement. Is the Circuit Breaker high, high enough, those kinds of things.
What do you say to the towns that aren't spending or are keeping some of the Chapter 70 money to use to, well, they might have to still be hitting foundation budget?
Right, so it's really ends up, that, when those conversations happen, what it really is about is how much they're funding over foundation. Right, 'cause nobody's ever sort of keeping the Chapter 70 aid. You're always funding at foundation and then it's a question of what, and really what ends up coming back to is, in many cases, you have school districts that have been accustomed to particular percentage increases from their local community. And the town says, okay, but you're getting X amount of an increase from the state, you know, how much of that is this versus that? So that's why, again, that's sort of like, first of all, you know, how does the calculation work? And then also, what are we planning to see? Then ends up with sort of, you know, potentially avoids nastier conversations when the sort of the governor's budget comes out and people pull the, um, the spreadsheets and find out that, oh my gosh, the Chapter 78 is going up. But, you know, so maybe we don't need to run the calculation the way we were going to.
Question on the, um, the health insurance part?
Yes.
Our health insurance is, is one line item, not tied to the school, but tied to employees? So how does Chapter 70, how would that impact, or how does that fit into that line item?
So effectively what happened, so when, so this spreadsheet that I sort of pulled in terms of revenue, when the state, when the district reports to the state how much they spent, there is a section of that form that actually is filled out by the town. And that counts as sort of a like contribution, so it goes into your required contribution calculation. That, if you have a student, if you have an SRO who's funded out of the police department, that counts. There's a bunch of town-side spending that goes on to what's called the Schedule 19. And that ends, that becomes part of the bottom line. So it's actually entirely possible that this wasn't all effectively dollars that were sort of sent to the school department. Some of it was, you know, we actually funded the health insurance, we actually, you know, funded an SRO, whatever it was. No, I'm glad you mentioned that, 'cause it does matter in terms of the, the calculation. And also, it's a good thing for the school committee to know, because some, because sort of not all of the dollars that are spent by you are necessarily voted by the school committee.
And then, you know, you mentioned special education, I feel like I understand that. You also said large increase in guidance and site.
Yes.
Where, what is, like, what is, is there a state mandate there, is there?
So, interestingly, so remember, the Student Opportunity Act is passed in '19, so it is even pre, sort of what we've seen since the pandemic of sort of this crisis of mental health. But there was already some indications at the state level that there were sort of concerns over how we were dealing with the mental health of students. And really, that's where the increase came from. Yeah.
So what does that mean, that, that they're expecting you to provide more of the services in the mental health space?
It's kind of maybe more, it's not exactly a recognition of what's actually being spent. But effectively, you know, what it is, is it's, it's increasing, it's increasing this line through here, right? That's the guidance and psychological services line. One thing that the state does have is it, so every year, the district files a, here's what we spent. And it files it in these categories. It says, here's how much we actually spent in administration, in instructional leadership and so forth. So the state can crunch, okay, so this is the, this is what, you know, the basis calculation. What are districts actually spending? Now, when we were doing the, 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 the fight, it was a fight, with the state over the foundation budget, a lot of calculations I ran were exactly those. Okay, so I could go back to West Bridgewater, I could pull your '22 numbers and say, okay, so this is the foundation budget, but here's what they actually spent. Can guarantee you that you spent more on special education, you probably spent more on health insurance. You probably spent less on instructional supplies. You may well have spent less on operations and maintenance. And those are just, I'm guessing, because those are typical. And part, this, by the way, was part of the argument that we brought to the state, because in the gateway cities, they not only were pulling money out of those categories to make up for the health insurance and special education, they were pulling money out of teachers. So, for example, in Worcester, we were 700 teachers short, we've got about 24,000 students, according to the calculation, right? So the state could actually say, okay, by our calculations for a school district of this size, you should have X number of guidance counselors and you have Y. I don't know that they did that. But it is something that you, that you can actually sort of recreate with the foundation budget, if you want to. Now, that's saying that their, their assumptions are right, maybe they're not. One category, for example, that I found that tended to be under, um, under, sort of calculated on the state side, was instructional leadership, because you're gonna have a principal in every building. And that, you know, that doesn't sort of calculate nicely out into percent, into percentages or decimal points. That was one. There, there are some others along the way, but that was one that surprised me.
So I'm gonna ask you a kind of a loaded question. That you, that you probably don't have the answer to, and I think that none of us have the answer to it. So earlier you said, in terms of, when we talk about Chapter 70 being an adequate minimum. And you said that most districts spend over.
Yep.
In fact, many of them spend much far, you know, very, much over. So how do you determine what we should be spending?
It's a very good question. So we kind of back, back calculated, so this was also, by the way, part of the argument we made over the Student Opportunity Act. We said statewide, at, at the point we were having the conversation, the average over net school spending was about 29%. So across Massachusetts, districts were spending, you know, close to a third more than they were required to. And then I would usually add, keep in mind, that in most places in Massachusetts, the way that they raise those funds is they go to town meeting. And so this is literally across Massachusetts, people voting tax increases for themselves to say, this is what we need in order to fund our schools. It's a pretty point, like pointed argument to make to the legislature, okay, so it was pretty successful. Part of what I'm interested in, as we phase in SOA, is how much districts effectively say, okay, so we're seeing these increases in the foundation budget, that necessarily means that we could see less spending over what's required, 'cause the required's going up. How much do districts then say, actually, now that we're doing that, that's not actually enough? Okay? Now, that's a very sort of technical measurement, right? But you can sort of pull that out of the, the spreadsheets. The one thing that's gonna be a little weird, I can't come up with a more professional way of putting it, 'cause it's just super weird, is the fact that we've got the SRO spending and the ARPA spending in the middle of this, right? So it's great and everyone's glad we have it, but in terms of the calculations of how much are we actually spending, it is throwing off everything, right? Because like, we don't, like, districts are spending a lot of more money, because they have a lot of more money. But they're spending it on very particular kinds of ways, and then it's gonna go away in FY25. So that's, you know, then I sort of say, okay, so could you go through and could you pull out all, like, I haven't had time to really think about this. I get really excited every time they come out with one of those, it's, it's called the per pupil spending sheet, as much as I'm very, very irritated that they call it that. I've actually argued with the state over it and they say, "We're required to by state law." And I'm like, okay, well, it's a dumb measurement, you should be, not be using it that way. But anyway, first thing I do is always then pull the foundation budget and compare it. But it would be interesting, if maybe I have time eventually, to start to pull those calculations of, okay, so if we set aside all of the grant funding and revolving fund funding, and we just start looking at, okay, so this is your required, this is your Chapter 70, that, what are districts actually still choosing to spend? I don't know, I'd like, that, that I think is, you know, and at the local level, you probably can more cleanly have those conversations of, okay, so this is our SRO spending and it's going away. What are we doing? And then what does that end up meaning? And then in the case here, okay, so then if we're gonna add another 25 kids at the elementary school, what is that gonna mean? What, you know, this gets into questions like, what size, what class size are we comfortable with? What additional, you know, what are the extras, quote unquote, right? Like, what kinds of things, what are the opportunities at the high school? How often are we having to update technology? Those, I think, all become part of that conversation too. Which is exactly the conversation that you all really, I would hope, be having, 'cause, you know, this is, this, the, the, we're not just gonna be shocked by how much Chapter 78 we got, but instead are gonna say, what's it gonna look like over the next couple of years is really, it's a great place for you all to be.
I think we're trying to have much more in-depth conversations about, you know, on a very granular level of what do these dollars fund?
Yes.
Why is the budget growing? And, you know, in regard to PPE, that is a measure that we've used to kind of go to taxpayers and say, this is where we are and we need more funding for the schools, rather than, I mean, because there gets to be kind of an argument of like, well, do you need this, do you need that?
Yep.
So what we've carefully done is choose districts, we use the DART districts.
Yep.
And choose districts that are like, and towns that are like West Bridgewater.
Yes.
Because of course, to your point, it's not, it's not truly apples to apples, because comparing West Bridgewater to Brockton.
Is pointless.
Is pointless, even though we are neighboring.
Yep.
They have such a larger number of students who require more spending. And so their PPE is upwards of, I think it's like 18,000 or something, it's over state average. But, so just trying to kind of come up with a conversation of, well, here's what we are spending. And we need to be spending that. And in the future, especially in light of school choice going away, we do need to be spending more, at least from the town side of things. And so it's, it's tough. I think we're kind of approaching a, um, the dam is about to burst, basically.
For lack of a better. So if I can make a suggestion, so now I'm, I'm really potentially gonna make your eyes cross, right? So this is what, this is where I pulled everything from, right? So this, just to, to put you on familiar turf, here's your foundation budget, right, you already saw that. Okay, so this is the rest of that spreadsheet. Something that I find useful is that you actually can pull up every city and town in Massachusetts, and then it has, you know, your foundation budget for '23, for '24, minimum contribution for '23, '24, aid and so forth. One of the things that is, I can't remember if it's on this one or the next one, I think it's on the next one. One of, and this is the rest of that sort of calculation, so this is local effort from property wealth, from income and so forth. Something that you might, two things you might find useful. One is that you can actually pull the percentage of your combined effort yield of foundation, which in a very sort of simplistic conversation is, from the state's perspective, what percentage of your foundation budget can your community afford to pay for, all things being otherwise equal? Okay? Now, you end up with some ridiculous ones, right, like Alford, but that's because Alford barely has any kids. They can't actually afford 493% of their foundation budget. You can't, so then, you know, what I do then is, okay, so sort from smallest to largest. You know that you're 57% or so, actually, where are you? Notice, by the way, that all of the ones that are, you know, in high percent proportions here. Oh, no, actually, this is, this is, hang on, let me do that again. But what you can do is you can actually look for like districts, right? That, and they may, now, that's what, what that does is because the foundation budget includes the student need and the combined effort yield includes the ability to fund, you kind of have those included. And this may give you a slightly different group to potentially look at. But that's one of the numbers that I now use when I'm sort of trying to get a, like, if I need a quick mental picture of a community, it's like, okay, so what's the proportionality of the need of the, the schools to the ability of the district to fund?
I think what, to Robin's question, that's exactly the dilemma.
Yep.
That's exactly what it is.
Yes.
And I see the statement, of course, it's old, you know, old English, but this adequate minimum.
Yes.
What does that mean?
What does that mean, exactly?
I thought an adequate minimum education, what would I do like?
Well, and that's exactly, right? So I don't, that, the other argument that I have, that I, I think we make a lot in Massachusetts is that, I don't think that there's anyone in Massachusetts who thinks an adequate minimum education is good enough for any of our kids.
Why would they set it there?
Right, exactly, well, I think because they were the ones who were having to fund it, but.
Yeah, I think it would be a lot easier conversation to have if the state said, this is the minimum that you need for a good education, and we say, okay, good, that's the amount we wanna spend.
Yep.
Except, yeah, what does it mean?
Yeah, if we felt like that was the right amount, that we are getting the education that we think we want for kids and nobody has to fight over it, 'cause we all agree.
Yep. And then it also gets into questions.
Basically saying that that minimum would be adequate.
Well, right, and this is why.
What does that mean?
Yeah, and then everybody agrees it isn't, right?
And what is that? Yes, and I mean, the foundation budget did, does have sort of behind it, at least originally, like, it means this number of kids in an elementary classroom, it means this number of guidance counselors per student, it means, so, there are sort of those pieces behind it, but that doesn't, that still doesn't include everything, right? It, it gives you sort of dollar amounts for facilities, but that, you know, in terms of maintenance, but that doesn't necessarily include everything. And then, of course, again, the last number of years have been so wild in terms of supply lines and how much, you know, what, what are the costs in terms of employee benefits, but also just actually having employees? And how are we competing on salaries, all of that conversation is part of that too.
I think, you know, I've gone in the weeds with Chapter 70, I love numbers, I love these spreadsheets. I guess I didn't realize that transportation was not. I guess I didn't realize that transportation was not.
Not included.
And that's a pretty big number.
Yes.
Wow.
Yep. And then, of course, if you, you know, add to that the fact that transportation is really difficult to get any sort of competition on, which is, I know something that is being brought up at the state level, the legislature is finally starting to pay some attention to that. You then end up with a, you know, two, two unyielding services effectively. Yep, but you are funding transportation out of local dollars regardless.
Very good.
All right, great. So what I will do is I will take this presentation and I'll share, I'll send it to the school committee to share with all of you. You will note that on the last slide, quite intentionally, is both my name and my email address and my telephone number. Okay, that is my cell number, it is not usually very far from me. Any of you should feel free to use it, okay? We, we, you know, are the Association for the School Committees, but we, you know, none of this works without FinComms and Select boards. So I'm happy to take questions from any of you about, like, if you go home and tomorrow morning you wake up and go, I really still don't feel like I understood this part or what about this? Shoot me an email, I'm happy to answer. Okay? Great.
Thank you so much, Jason.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So the next regular school committee meeting is Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM here in the Middle-Senior High School Learning Commons. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you as much.